This Charter Office asks that you see your name.
The last question, in thirty days, if you still have time to prepare for the upcoming suit, how do you react?
So, this application around school will open in twenty-five, twenty-six. So they'll have these family reports.
Yes, thank you. Roll call. To, motion two.
But after the recommendation of the Charter Office. So let's move, uh, motion by, uh, McKissick.
The motions.
So, of course, I just wanted to, I think it is.
Oh, I'll second the motion that I want to make. I think, uh, having my colleagues share.
Um, and what our legal team, this, this process is, makes us a better body. I also, it sounds like there is a lot of support and we want to get that extra time to Grizzlies Prep tonight, but I wanna, I want you all to have some faith that it is my intention, so I intend to support it tonight, because I want the community to see some early signals, uh, that the board is with you, even, even when we know some adjustments need to be made. So, thank you all tonight.
Commissioner McKissick?
Aye.
Commissioner Hugh Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Woods?
Aye.
Commissioner Calvo?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Williams? Chair Green?
No.
You have four in the negative and two in the affirmative.
He has four in the positive and three in the negative.
Just clear.
There's one missing.
The administration recommendation is upheld, Madam Chair.
No, it takes five votes. Requires five. It is not resolved. There are four votes in the affirmative and three in the negative?
So what does it mean?
You need, must have five votes to adopt.
I get that, what does it mean?
It means that you have rejected this motion.
And then what? So are you saying we just approve the school?
Uh, I would suggest you try that motion. No, you haven't just approved the school.
I know we have, and that's, that's the point I'm making, right, okay? So therefore, there's been no action by this body, uh, and what would you recommend to remember?
If someone, if someone would like to make a motion to grant the charter, that would be appropriate at this time.
So, that's why you make the big bucks. I'll restate the motion in the affirmative, uh, so I, Madam Chair, I put the motion on the floor to approve Grizzlies Prep.
Second. I gave a second too. Third. Roll call.
I want to make sure everyone's very clear on what we are stating here. So, the vote that initially took place, it meant that we were, when I was saying aye, I was saying I was supporting the administration's recommendation to not pass the school at this time. What we're about to do now is saying like, okay, let's approve Grizzlies Prep girls to go forward without going through all the necessary steps that every other charter school has had to do. So, just want to make sure that we're clear on what we're voting for.
Now, I, I understand, uh, that, and, and I'm not, I might, I might reconsider my vote, not because I didn't get it the first time, but I do, like Commissioner Hugh Garcia, I want to signal support to that. I don't want this body to be rubber stamping, but now I do believe that we have to amend the application to, to the higher standard. So if we have a commitment from the administration that they will work in the next thirty days and from the, from the applicant to make this, to set this, this application for success, then I'm in favor of, of rejecting, uh, rejecting it so they can, they can amend it, so they will, they will be denied, in other words. Yeah, so that was confusing, but yeah.
Madam Chair, oh, so, I do think, and this is an opportunity, uh, because I understand we have parliamentary procedures, but it's quite confusing when we state a motion in the negative and you have only seven people here, and then falling short of that, it's clear what the intent of this body just did, right? So having to restate that motion in the affirmative in order for that to be validated. In the future, Mr. Parliamentarian, perhaps we do that on the first, on the front end. It was clear through the conversation that there was not going to be, uh, five votes. So to Ms., uh, Commissioner McKissick's point, and the public, we're simply restating the motion in the positive, so now that when it, or if it is denied, then the intention of the board is clear. So, what happens if they're still four-three?
If it's still four-three, it is not adopted. You must have five votes to adopt.
No.
There is a way around it, if you'd like to go back and do the first vote again.
I don't think we need to. I think, uh, Mr. Commissioner, um, Calvo has been on record stating his intentions, so let's just take the vote in affirmative. So we got a motion on the floor, Madam Chair, to approve the school and a second by you. I think if we take the vote, then it'll be clear the intent of the body. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McKissick?
No.
Commissioner Hugh Garcia?
Pass.
Commissioner Woods?
No.
Commissioner Calvo?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Williams? Chair Green?
Pass. Uh, I'm yes. I'd like my vote to reflect yes.
It's my turn now. My vote will reflect yes.
That's five-two. Call the, call the vote out loud, please.
Okay, Commissioner Hugh Garcia, yes, right?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Woods, no.
Yes, it's five-two, no. I was just helping you with the count. The five, just give it five.
Five in affirmative and two in the negative.
That motion passes, right? Thank you.
No.
The motion fails.
Two in the affirmative and five in the negative, the motion is not adopted.
So therefore, Mr. Parliamentarian, it's rejected, right?
It's not the same as rejecting. It means you did not, uh, do that. The only way around this, ladies and gentlemen, is by general consent to take the first vote again, which is to adopt the recommendation of the administration to deny the charter.
Well, let's do it.
We keep doing this until we keep trying until, until we come, do we keep trying until it's approved?
So by voting yes, you're denying the application.
Voting yes on this is to accept the administration's recommendation to deny.
Correct. Yes means to deny the application.
That is it. That's the problem of a negative vote. Sorry, folks, it's crazy.
That's okay, just as long as we're clear. So that is the motion on the table. Is that it?
As soon as it's made and seconded.
I make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, again, to vote on adopting the recommendation of the administration.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner McKissick?
Yes, I am voting to accept the administration's recommendation.
Commissioner Hugh Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Woods?
If it's okay with the Parliamentarian, I'm voting yes as well, to accept the administration's recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Calvo?
Yes, I accept the, the recommendation of the administration.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams? Chair Green?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative and six.
There's six in the affirmative.
Six in the affirmative and one negative. Their motion passes.
Yes, it is adopted to accept the recommendation from the Charter Office. Say clear? Our hearts clear, our minds clear. All right, one more.
Great job, Madam Chair.
Wooddale Middle School. Do you need a high level, or are we, we don't? Okay.
Can you clearly state the motion, Madam Chair?
The motion is to accept the recommendation of the Charter Office.
I like it. Is there a motion on the floor already?
I'm waiting on you.
Motion to accept the recommendation.
Okay, second by Commissioner Garcia. No debate. Oh, I'm just kidding.
No, no, I, I think, yeah, sorry. Same thing than the first one. You know, we, I, I had the opportunity to, to visit Wooddale. I think you guys are doing great work, but this application is to be strong, to be fair to the first applicant and to every applicant and to the success of our students. So, please, you have thirty days. I'm studying my, I'm gonna accept the recommendation of the district, uh, but I hope that you resume your application.
Um, I feel the same way on it. Um, you just have to go through, uh, go through the process one more time. So, we're, we're gonna take another vote now.
Roll call vote, Mrs. Keys.
Commissioner McKissick?
Yes, voting to accept the administration's recommendation.
Commissioner Hugh Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvo?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams? Chair Green?
Yes.
You have seven in affirmative.
Motion is adopted to accept the recommendation from the Charter School Office. Thank you. We have one more item of business, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Woods to help.
Madam Chair, prior to going into the, uh, next item, I ask that we take a fifteen-minute, uh, recess for the board meeting to go into executive session, to discuss the next item, uh, and then reconvene in twenty minutes.
All right, give us fifteen minutes, enjoy the music.
Thank you. And the rationale, Madam Chair, for the record, as I saw the media covering their face, is to discuss the next item that's on the agenda. is to discuss the next item that's on the agenda.
Commissioner Wood, you're being requested. Some move to accept the contract?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Calvo, NTC.
No, I'm sorry. Madam Chair, I plan to support this. I think we just saw very enthusiastically how we approved a new teacher schedule, for example. We are facing ESAR funding cuts. We have a new state formula. We just gave teachers an increase so we can use all the help that we need at the CFO's office. This board needs the support, the financial guidance, to make those, you know, to make specifically the budget for next year work. So, I think this contract, you know, not only lives to our promise that we made to the former superintendent, but we've been, it makes sense to me, so I plan to support it.
Madam Chair?
Roll call vote.
Oh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. And I didn't turn my light on, so you didn't. It's okay. I apologize for that. So, I too want to be on record because the items like this, Madam Chair, while financially maybe small in scope when you think about the massive contracts we often pass as a body, yet I do want to thank our legal representatives in this process to make sure that we continue to be good steward of the very limited resources that are needed to support students and that we clearly expect to get an ROI from this investment. As Commissioner Calvo clearly indicated, Mr. Parliamentary, thank you. As we have clearly articulated that we're gonna be faced with staffing challenges, we're gonna be faced with budget cuts. And so, by being able to take an asset in human capital and to be able to work alongside the transition of Dr. Fagan, support our champion of teachers, our CFO, Langston, I'm confident that through board management, we will get a return on this investment. And, to be clear, that is not a news story, is that the superintendent contract contemplated a process in which someone could step into the gap, serve kids, and then still be able to provide that service for 12 months. So, I too am excited to support this. Thank my colleagues for holding the reins around cost containment while also being respectful of Ms. Williams and the work that we know she'll continue to do and support students.
Madam Chair, call for the question, please.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner McKissick?
Aye.
Commissioner Hira Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Calvo? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Chair Green?
Aye.
Yes.
You have Kevin Woods. You're rolling, aren't you? You ready to go?
Commissioner Woods?
Aye.
You have seven in affirmative.
Thank you. That motion passes. And just last thing, very quickly, was our allocations. Thirty-nine thousand, six hundred, nine dollars. I just need a motion and a second and a roll call vote. Motion by Commissioner McKissick, second by Commissioner Frank Johnson. Roll call vote, Ms. Keys.
Commissioner McKissick?
Aye.
Commissioner Hira Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Woods?
Aye.
Commissioner Calvo?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams? Chair Green?
Aye.
You have seven in affirmative.
Thank you. That motion passes. Thank you. Have a great evening. This concludes our business meeting.